All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Council Caucus. Tonight we have Neighborhood Works in. We have Todd Posley and Gerard Hetman to give us a presentation and an update on their work in throughout the city. So, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Todd Posley, I'm the Neighborhood Revitalization Manager at Neighborhood Works, and this is Gerard Hetman. He's our Community Development Specialist. We've had an opportunity, I think, over the past few years, just about every year, to come and update council on the work that we've been doing in partnership with the city. We love coming, we love sharing all the good things that we're doing in partnership with the city of Scranton, so happy to be here tonight. We thought we'd take maybe 20 minutes, just kind of run through some of the programs that we've been involved in, especially our Beautiful Blocks program and our work in West Scranton, and then we'll touch on the homebuyer program and mortgage relief program as well. And hopefully that'll save a few minutes if you have any questions, but feel free if you have any questions, comments, you know, while we're presenting to you. Don't hesitate to interrupt us. I think most of you are probably familiar with Neighborhood Works, but I thought I'd start with a very brief overview. So we're a community development and housing nonprofit in the city of Scranton. We're actually, we just celebrated our 40th anniversary, so we've been working in Scranton for the past 40 years. Our work's obviously grown and expanded in that time, but these are our five service areas. The first is our financial counseling, financial coaching services. So we help families with things like credit counseling, budget management, things like that. We provide free one-on-one counseling. We also do homebuyer education and training, so for any families that are interested in purchasing a home. Again, these are free services. We'll help them figure out how to save money for a down payment, boost their credit score, and identify a home, and a realtor, and inspector, and things like that. We have an Aging in Place program that's focused on serving older homeowners and helping them stay in their homes as long as possible by providing the safety improvements that they need. So, for example, if, you know, an older senior has trouble getting in and out of a bathtub and needs a walk-in shower, you know, we might replace that for them. If they have some mobility issues, need a wheelchair ramp, things like that, those are other services we provide. We do a little bit of property acquisition and redevelopment as well, so, you know, basically acquiring through various means, homes, often blighted homes, that we can rehab and then sell either to first-time homebuyers or, you know, in some cases, just at market-rate housing that we then take the proceeds and invest in our other programs. And then finally, our Neighborhood Revitalization work, which Gerard and I are most intimately familiar with and which we'll kind of be focusing on tonight.
It's great to be with you, council. Thank you, as always. Our partnership with the city is an engaging and proactive partnership, I like to say. So being able to come in and talk to council here in this caucus setting is a great benefit to everyone, and we enjoy sharing the good news and engaging in the partnership here with council. So, our Beautiful Blocks program is one that many of you are familiar with. We're now going into our fourth consecutive program cycle in the city of Scranton with Beautiful Blocks. And of course, we're familiar with this from being modeled after the city of Oswego in New York, the Renaissance Block Challenge served as the basis for this program. We provide matching funding of up to $1,000 per home for participating city residents who complete exterior improvements to their homes as part of Beautiful Blocks. For most participants, that's a one-for-one matching ratio. So if they want the $1,000 from us, they have to contribute at least $1,000 of their own funds towards their project. We do have a little bit of a reduced matching level, though, for residents who fall below 80% of the area's median income for their total household income. And we think that that makes it a little bit more affordable, a little bit more accessible for folks who may not be able to afford the full dollar-for-dollar match. We do have a competitive application process, so we have a selection committee that reviews and scores and selects the applications. We do focus on what we call middle neighborhoods with the program. It is open for application to the entire city. We do see a good positive effect in neighborhoods sometimes where there may not be as many programs and there may not be as much of a focus to sustain and grow that neighborhood. Sometimes when you see a neighborhood that has more blight and there's more issues, sometimes you see other dedicated efforts to improve it. Neighborhoods that may be a little bit above that level of sustainability, may be a little bit above that level in terms of community development, this program helps get resources into those areas to keep them moving, keep them growing, keep them going forward. We like especially the community-building aspect of Beautiful Blocks. We see engagement among residents, we see cooperation among residents. Some of them have been in their homes for multiple generations, others may have just moved in a few months previous. So it grows connections among neighbors, helps build that neighborly spirit, and we do provide stipends to each participating block group to do a community service project or to have a celebration among neighbors, again, to keep that neighborly spirit growing and moving. So we'll show you a highlight video here briefly from one of our groups in the 2020 cycle. This was the Orm Troopers. They were located over on Orm Street, and they did some similar projects, you know, most of it involved sidewalk or step work, just trying to make their homes safer and more accessible. So they had a really good run. So let's see if we can get this here.
Actually, I heard about the program some years ago, and I didn't have enough neighbors to go in with me at the time. So I moved here three years ago, and I investigated back in April, and I filed the application, and I knew I wanted sidewalks, and I canvassed the neighborhood, and I got yes, 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 and yes, and I just blew it on, and it was great. Great opportunity.
My name is Lita Rosa. Well, I needed to have some stoner steps repaired, so I contacted Chris Kohut, who ended up putting in a whole new setup to make it actually even more beautiful than it was before. So he laid down new steps and new stone work around. Now, of course, my hydrangeas will look much better in the spring, and I also added a light post to make it more inviting.
My name is DJ Perera. What happened was that our bottom step was broken here, and it was really hard, and it was a danger of walking up, and we had to have replaced. It was a difficult task because of the way that bottom step is stuck on the other blocks.
My name is Paulette Cassiata. I got beautiful sidewalks alongside my house in front, and now I'm behind my back.
My name is Joe Triano. Oh, this program was terrific, because actually, I'll be honest with you, it was kind of the push, the kick we needed to do this work. It was getting to the point where we're getting worried, because I thought it could be dangerous the way the slate was up and down, and it was just breaking apart, whatever. So by doing this, now it's safe walking through here, and helps make the house and the area look better, and again, for us, it's more convenient and safe for us.
There you go. So you see some of the numbers here. These are our first three years cumulatively going into our fourth cycle, so we've had 34 block groups go through the program. 261 individual projects have been completed in those 34 groups. We've seen a total grant award amount at $219,000 from our organization, and that's been matched by over two-to-one, the ratio of matching funds, from residents that put their own money into the program. So it's a great return on investment. We see, again, not just the minimum matching amount, but we see residents often spending even more to complete their projects and improve their neighborhoods through these efforts. And we'll just show a few before and afters here. So you see some projects are, again, front steps, sidewalks, porch work, obviously there, and you see a safety improvement, you see an aesthetic improvement, lots of good things happening there. Sometimes you get a little bit bigger projects, whether it be siding, painting, window replacement, or some combination. Once again, another sidewalk project. This was in a group near the Orm Street group, and, you know, again, everything from aesthetics to safety, that walkability that we look for, all right there. And then also, you know, again, our larger projects sometimes, again, involve painting, sometimes they involve awnings, front porch trim, anything, again, that's an exterior improvement winds up in there. And a few keys with this, again, some projects are smaller, some are larger in scope, but they all count if they're an exterior improvement that's eligible. Program's open to all residents in the city, any neighborhood, any income level, and again, that two-to-one matching ratio that we see, we think is an especially impactful item, because it's not just us making the awards, but it's the residents partnering with us to go in dollar-for-dollar or more sometimes. And we do have provisions to allow groups to apply again. We've continued to look at that from year to year and find a way where we allow for applications to continue building momentum among participants, but we also want to make sure that new people, new residents, come into the groups and are able to access the same and apply the same way. And we have resources also that groups can participate in, either with Beautiful Blocks or after. The Community Leadership Institute, sponsored by Neighborhood Works America, is a resident training program for neighborhood leaders. We've seen Beautiful Blocks participants enter in that. The Neighborhood Leaders Forum is a program that we run together with the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania and the University of Scranton. We'll have more sessions coming up with that to grow neighborhood leadership here in the city. And then our mobile toolkit, which you see there is a trailer-based collection of tools and equipment that can be used by neighborhood groups to improve their community. So I'll turn it back over to Todd now for some highlights of our West Scranton neighborhood plan.
Just one thing, there's a clarification. You can mix and match projects, right? You don't need to, you know, if one group, you know, they don't have to all do sidewalks, for example. You know, you could do, one house could do sidewalks, the next house could do landscaping, the next house could do siding or painting of a house.
That is correct, sir, yes. Some neighbors do choose to coordinate projects, especially if there's kind of a group need, and if they can get the same contractor, that's also a plus, but we certainly do not require that. We've seen groups with a variety of different projects, and the biggest thing is if it impacts that home and it makes a positive difference for that homeowner in the context of the neighborhood, that's what we look at.
Great, thank you.
Speaking of the same, somewhat of the same topic, the other picture that we saw was about a half-block around from Orm Street here. Were they part of the same Orm Street group, or does it have to be, just to clarify for the public, do they have to be on the same block, or could it be in the general vicinity of?
So we look for the general vicinity. We like to advise groups when they apply to have about no more than one block in either direction from each other. So if you can make, picture one turn around a block, either to the next block or around the corner, that's what we look for. Once you get further out from that setup, it gets a little bit harder to make the connections. So, yeah, the group that was featured in the video and the group where the participant had the sidewalks, they were in the same general neighborhood there around Orm Street, but they were actually two separate groups.
Okay. Is there a standard distance?
We generally see, again, within about one city block. Oftentimes, it kind of focuses on one block, and you'll see a few other people either around the corner or on the next block, but there tends to be, just by default, one block that it tends to revolve around whoever the block captain is. That's the group member that puts together the application and leads the effort. It tends to sort of center around them, and they recruit their neighbors, and it branches out from there.
Yeah, so these two groups, there would have been several different projects on that other street, and then enough projects on Orm Street to?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Didn't you do like Orm and a piece of Rebecca?
What's that?
You did Orm and a piece of Rebecca, right? Part of?
That's correct, yeah.
I know you did that already.
Yep, like this, the group that was in the video was a little bit lower on Orm Street, and then there was the group on Rebecca. They actually, I think, had one or two homes on Orm Street as well, but there was that, and then Garfield, there were some homes on the back there.
And of course, we're excited about the Beautiful Blocks program, what we've accomplished the past few years, and looking forward to continuing that program this year and for the foreseeable future. We're just as excited about the work that we're doing in West Side as well, so probably the last time we were in front of you, we talked about the planning process and where we were. Now we're able to proudly say that we have a finished neighborhood plan in place, so it's a 10-year revitalization plan for West Scranton. We kind of identified a, about a one-square-mile area of West Side that we wanted to focus on, and really develop a resident-driven vision for that community and what it could be over the next 10 years. That plan's in place, it's available on our website. We have the full 150-page version for anybody that has trouble sleeping at night. We've also got a shorter 10-page highlights version that'll give you a good idea of, you know, what we're hoping to accomplish in partnership with the city and the residents over the next few years. There's a whole slew of strategies in that plan, you know, that we're pursuing. They generally fall into these four categories: community character, the commercial corridors, so in West Scranton, that's really focused on Main Street or Main Avenue and Luzerne Street, the services and amenities that are available in the neighborhood, and of course, housing. As I mentioned, there are lots of strategies in here, but I think more than anything, the neighborhood plan develops a vision for the neighborhood and what it could be. You know, everything from, you know, Main Avenue and Allen Park, what that could look like, to things like Luzerne Street, you know, where there were four or five vacant lots, you know, that we've already been able to clean up, and, you know, this is kind of the vision for what that could be, you know, maybe some housing, maybe a community space, some green space. This is kind of what we imagine Culver Field might look like, so it's a city park, probably the largest, one of the largest in West Scranton at least, that, you know, is, I think, underutilized, you know, and with some improvements, could really be a great asset to the neighborhood. So even while we were finishing the plan, and ever since, we dove right into implementing that plan and taking a crack at a few projects. So I mentioned the Luzerne Street cleanup, where we've already been able to at least clean up that site and get it ready for being redeveloped. We've done a mural, so that one's on at Catalano's, one of the landmarks in West Scranton. That was actually, we had a lot of community participation in that, the residents actually helped us select the design for that, and then we commissioned a local muralist to paint it. Last year, we launched the Hometown Heroes Banner program in West Side, so we've got about 35 flags hanging so far, and we actually just took applications. We've got over 100 more that we're planning on hanging again this spring, so all in West Scranton. And then we're working with the city, too, on identifying some locations for creative crosswalks, kind of murals across the street. And then some of the, these are some of the things that we have, you know, in the works. I mentioned the Hometown Heroes Banner program expansion. We're really excited, we're going to be launching a commercial facade grant program in West Scranton this spring as well. So, similar to Beautiful Blocks, it'll be a matching grant program for exterior repairs. The difference, obviously, is that this one's going to be focused on commercial properties on Main Avenue and Luzerne Street. Property owners will be eligible for up to $5,000 in a matching grant to do exterior facade work, could be painting, replacing windows, doors, awnings, signage, things like that. Along with that, you know, we're looking at other ways that we can support the businesses in West Side. We're going to hopefully be helping them reinvigorate a business association there. We're going to be working with the Scranton, University of Scranton Small Business Development Center to provide some technical support to them, you know, helping with things like marketing plans and hiring retaining employees, things like that, which, you know, I probably don't have to tell any of you is particularly important today. I mentioned Allen Park, so we have some funding to do some minor improvements to Allen Park as well as the city-owned parking lot that's right across the street, so you can look forward to that this year. We're also working with the city on a gateway project. This is a little outside of our target area, but on North Main Avenue, up by the Scranton Expressway, taking some land there, installing some gateway signage and doing streetscape improvements. And then we'll be doing other, you know, we're looking at other streetscape improvements and park improvements, working pretty closely with the city's Office of Economic and Community Development and accomplishing those in the coming years. And then last but not least, we're excited to welcome back a whole bunch of volunteers this summer. They'll be focusing on West Scranton, serving some of our older homeowners in that neighborhood with exterior home repairs, painting, porch repairs, things like that. We unfortunately haven't been able to run this volunteer program the past couple of summers due to the pandemic, but we're going to be working with group work camps to bring them back this year. And then lastly, you know, we're excited to announce that we recently received Elm Street designation through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So if you're familiar with the Main Street program, this is kind of the second neighborhood component to that. So the Main Street Elm Street Designation Program is a statewide program where communities that have an active revitalization effort that's based in a neighborhood plan can apply, receive designation, and then that opens up the door to additional state funding opportunities as well as some technical support to actually carry out the plan.
And I'll just recap briefly our homeownership services for an update. Two programs that we've been fortunate to partner with the city on that we've seen a great impact made in the city is the First-Time Homebuyer program. So as of today, we have, 29 clients have closed in the program with over $300,000 of assistance provided to those new first-time homebuyers. And we have one pending at the moment here. They'll also add $14,000 to that. So again, we see folks coming in and purchasing their first homes here in the city of Scranton, boosting our community in so many ways through this initiative. And then also the Mortgage Relief Program. There was lots of excitement last year when the rent mortgage utility relief programs rolled out. We've been fortunate to administer the mortgage relief portion of that, so we've seen 30 clients served up to this point, and over $127,000 in assistance rendered through that program, mostly again run by our homeownership and financial services team, so.
So just on that, is that, so with those first-time homebuyers, is that just this year?
This is?
Or does it cover the, what, I think it's been two years since you guys took over that program?
Since the start of the program, I believe, councilman.
Okay.
So that's the cumulative, you know, year-to-year.
That's great, because I know that, you know, that program sort of lagged under the city just because we didn't have, you know, the resources to market it and to then, you know, process the applications as well, so that is great.
That's where we come in, so it's been a great partnership, and it's been great to work with the city. All the city staff, I will certainly shout out, have been great to partner with in terms of communication, in terms of information sharing, updates, you know, anything we would look for. Everyone's been, you know, A++ not just with the homeownership services, but also our neighborhood revitalization. You know, everyone under Eileen's team, Eileen Sabriani's group has been very good, and everyone else we've worked with here, including Mr. Waldenberg setting this caucus up, we appreciate his prime's communication and assistance. So we've always had good working relationships with all these programs, with city staff, so. And that is our, that is our final slide. We welcome any questions or comments from council.
Gerard, is it possible just to explain who would qualify for the mortgage relief, just so anybody watching at home could, you know, see if they qualify for that? Just give a brief overview.
So our line of service at Neighborhood Works does not administer that, so I don't want to speak exactly to the specifics, just because I'm not the intake person for that, but we would encourage anyone who's interested or who may know of somebody who's interested to contact our office. Our staff member is Kathy, who administers that program, so just ask for Kathy. It's 570-558-2490, and she will work with any prospective applicant to evaluate their qualifying situation. So we see that a lot, and people stop in or call us, we'll be happy to give them a one-on-one consultation on that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have?
I have a question, but I just want to say thank you and keep up the great work.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, just on the same note, it's always a pleasure having you guys come in to talk to us about your projects and programs. I'm interested in seeing the volunteer service projects up and running again this summer. Give me a call when you do, because I'd love to pitch in some work.
Just on the, on the North Main Ave gateway, just a little more detail on that, just so people at home are aware, that's the, I guess if you're coming south on Main Avenue, that's the left side there that, you know, usually collects trash and that sort of stuff, right? It's cleaning that up?
Correct, yeah, so that's the location, right there by the expressway. The city actually applied for and received a multimodal grant to do some work there, so we're going to be partnering with them, cleaning up, just cleaning up that area, new sidewalks, some lighting, get it to the point where it can be, you know, easily maintained. So that's, yeah, it's a more welcoming entrance into the, into West Side or into North Scranton when you're coming off of the expressway there.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Well, thank you, thank you so much for coming in, and thank you for all your hard work over there. You really are doing a great job.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild? Here. Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Donahue.
Present.
Did we hear King are there or no?
Is he on there?
Yeah, I'd say before we get started, let's make sure he's on.
Let's make sure he's on, just to make sure.
Mr. King.
Mr. King, are you there? All right, okay, so, yeah, now we could hear Mr. King. So Mr. King is going to, has a work comment, he's going to be participating via telephone, just to keep everyone aware that if, at any time, no one, if we can't hear Mr. King, he will have to be marked absent, won't be able to vote. He did have a work commitment out of town this evening. Mr. Waldenberg, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, memorandum from city solicitor Jessica Eskra dated January 31, 2022, to city council solicitor Sean Gallagher regarding city appointments. 3B, minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Special Meeting held March 3, 2021. 3C, minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Regular Meeting held January 5, 2022. 3D, correspondence dated February 7, 2022, received from city council solicitor Sean Gallagher to city solicitor Jessica Eskra regarding city appointments.
Are there any comments in any of the third order items?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, Solicitor Gallagher, for your letter in response to the one we got from Solicitor Eskra, and I strongly support your interpretation of what our role is on council. Thank you.
I would just like to say that, you know, we are trying to work out an agreement with the administration on this issue. You know, we don't know what that's going to look like. We're giving them some time to review Solicitor Gallagher's response to the letter we received last week. I'm hoping we could come to an equitable agreement, because I'd rather not have this fight, I'd rather concentrate on things that are of more importance to the residents of the city. Anyone else?
I guess at this time, I'd also like to say I support Mr. McAndrew and Mr. Donahue on this. Although we might not, we may want to move forward with city business, I think this is a fight to have. Taxpayer money does fund these positions. Council does have oversight to review the resumes, and I think in the sake of transparency, council should get these resumes so they're in public view for the citizens in order to make sure we have the most qualified candidates for these positions.
Anyone else? Do any council members have any announcements at this time? Do any, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have an announcement. So the licensing permits and inspections department has received complaints that not everyone have, has received renewal forms for those whose licenses expired at the end of 2021. The renewal forms were mailed out back in, in December. So if you did not receive a renewal form, please reach out to the LIPS department. They could be contacted at 570-348-4193, or you can email them at LPIAF@scranpa.gov for all licenses and renewals. And then contractors have until March 31 to renew their license. And one other thing I wanted to mention, thought that the ice festival was, was very well done this year. I was happy to see that, that they had it for their second year, and I had gotten a chance to, to go down and thought the ice sculptures were, were beautiful. I loved the Olympic theme. I thought it was very fitting and it was great to see so many businesses involved in it, even though it was a pretty cold weekend for it, but it was good for the ice. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First on the list is Joan Hoda-Wanets.
Any update on the status of the 2020 audit?
So we did get an update yesterday that they received the sewer authority audit last week and that we would have it in the next couple of weeks. That was the extent of the update.
I would request that when we contract for, or I assume that Kowanski's doing the 2021 audit?
They're on contract to do it. We do have to put a request for proposals, qualifications out for next year's audit.
Okay, but for the 2021 audit, I think it'd be useful if you would put in third order the engagement letter, which would tell the public the basic parameters of the audit and including when Kowanski expects to give you a deliverable. Now, previous council meetings, I heard the, the date 30 September thrown out, and we've long passed that date. So I'd like to know if they're doing the 2021 audit, when they expect to turn that one in. There should be no surprises on their behalf because they know exactly where the bottlenecks are. Any update on the labor negotiations, the contracts still nega, negotiation?
They're still negotiating.
Okay. One thing, when I downloaded the agenda and printed out 3A, which is Jessica Eskra's January 31 memorandum to council, I only got the first page. Were there additional pages in that memorandum? It was just one page?
It was just-
No signature block or anything?
There was just one, nope.
Okay. I was curious, I've rarely seen that kind of thing. With regard to the recent ice storm, I've got some mixed feelings on that. It was unfortunate that it hit on a Friday because that means that a lot of businesses are closed on Saturday and Sunday, so they left their sidewalks unsalted, okay? I live downtown, I'm a pedestrian, and I have to do a lot of walking, as do other people who live downtown in the high rises. You'd be surprised at the number of people, you know, either they're going to church over the weekend, or they're going to Rite Aid to fill a prescription out, whatever. They frequently have to get in and about. Many businesses were very good. They salted as soon as the, the sleeting stopped on Friday afternoon, so it, it didn't take a whole lot to at least make it passable and safe. But for those who waited until Monday or did nothing at all, shame, 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 you know, because that's very dangerous, especially for many of the elderly residents downtown. It's my understanding that ordinances exist requiring businesses to clean up after a storm within 48 hours, and I think we should be looking to enforce that, you know? I mean, that's a safety issue, and I think, you know, Councilwoman Rothschild, isn't that your area public safety? Or it's yours?
I'm the vice chair of it, yes.
Sorry. But it's a safety issue, and since you have an ordinance that addresses that, maybe there should be some spot enforcement, which is also, is that me?
No.
Okey dokey? Are we haunted or something?
I'm letting him know.
Will you just turn that mic off for a minute?
The ghost of City Hall.
I apologize.
But at any rate, also cars, should cars have been told to park elsewhere for, for the 24 hours afterwards so that DPW could do a more efficient cleaning and salting of the streets? 100 Block of Penn Avenue, one way, and all they were able to do because of the parked cars was one narrow path in the middle of the street. And that's where I walked when I went to Mass every morning, right down the middle of the street. So I think DPW did a very good job considering the constraints, but if we've got ordinances telling people to salt their sidewalks, move their cars, we need to start enforcing them because it is a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Tom Coyne.
Tom Coyne Menucha, members of council. First thing is regarding the mayor and operations. We have looked at beforehand that the mayor has put out the proclamations for COVID and shut, and shut places down, and I have always questioned that because under the Home Rule Charter, the health regulations are mandated that city council is the person who is in charge of health regulations. If there is a health emergency, if there is a, any impact on emergency situations that regard personal safety, other than police, city council is, by city charter, the one who is supposed to take care of it. Once city council rules that an emergency is in place, then it is the mayor's job to execute city council's will. So these emergency declarations by the mayor because of COVID never should have happened independent of city council because city council is actually the body who is supposed to declare these emergencies, and the mayor's office, under her executive authority, is the one who is then supposed to go forward and enforce what council has put forward. Stepping into that, we have a new health coordinator. During this last emergency, we were paying, last year we were given a grant and a lot of money for a new health coordinator, and during this entire new Omicron variation and the shutdown of City Hall, I've heard absolutely no response, no impact from it. I don't know if the, the hired position for the coordinator was actually ever here because as a member of the public, I saw no communication whatsoever coming from that person in the position of health coordinator during a health emergency. Looking forward at the, at 7B, once again, we have a situation where they are coming forward and asking to give authorization to look at confidential information and to process confidential information of a person who is already processing confidential information. This is standard of doing everything backwards. We're going to give, we're going to give the person the gun, the badge, go out there, do the job, and then when there's a problem, oh, then I guess we'll actually have to put them in the police department. Everything in this administration is backwards. I go back to the fire chief back when the mayor increased by fiat the position, the pay for the position beyond what was announced, what was put in the budget and the council without coming back to council. Again, the IT director. When the IT director was struck down, she put the IT director into a management position with no director to act as director to directly circumvent city council's will and authority. Recently, we've had a exclusion for the six-month move to Scranton because any employee is supposed to move here within six months of being employed. Suddenly, that comes in that an exclusion is needed when it shouldn't have been in the first place because that's part of hiring the jobs. This administration, this city council needs to be forceful for it because there is a pattern of doing what is wanted and demanding forgiveness afterwards. And if a stern step isn't taken forward, there will be no negotiation, they'll be walking over you. And if that comes to bay, I do fear that the Home Rule Charter will be rewritten by the citizens if the government cannot fix its own house. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Norma Jeffries.
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And the first thing I wanted to talk about tonight was the raising of the flag, the Pan America flag at City Hall on Saturday, and maybe, it was a great program, it was about 45 minutes, and maybe because we were all so bundled up with masks and everything, I didn't see anybody. I don't know whether Jessica, whether you were there or anyone else, but we were all, all we could see were our eyes because it was so cold. But it was a great ceremony, and I'm glad I braved the cold to be there and all. And, and DPW did a great job of clearing the steps and the sidewalks and everything, so it was safe for us to walk out there in that particular area. The second thing I wanted to talk about was I gave each of you the Valentine Day food drive that we're going to have at Neyald Park on Saturday and Sunday this coming weekend. This is our second time that we've done this, and it's always a tremendous success. So I'm just asking, you know, if anyone, if you could only bring one box of cereal or one can of soup, you know, just think of that's going to feed someone who doesn't have anything that night. Sometimes we get a little bit in our own little bubble, and we have such a choice of things when we go to eat, but everyone's not like that. So I always like working with this food bank, this food drive, and the food goes to local churches that have, you know, small pantries in their church. So I just hope everyone could come out and, and help us with that. That's from 11:00 AM to 3:00 on Saturday and Sunday. Supposed to be warm too, I think, those days. The next thing I wanted to talk about was just to commend Neighbor Works and that great presentation that I saw tonight on their plans and their, their project that they were working in West Side, and we've all driven through West Side and gone to Catalano's, you know, at their great hoagies and things, and so it's going to be good to see what they're going to, the future holds for West Side. But as I was listening, it brought back to mind that we have to drive down Lackawanna Avenue to get to West Side. That's the only way I know to get there, is to drive down Lackawanna Avenue. Maybe we need a project on Lackawanna Avenue similar to West Side to get Lackawanna Avenue up and going. I'm not even sure if, what is it, maybe five businesses along there? I know the train shop is there, the hoagie shop, I don't know, there's a couple along there. But they need some help there too to drive through Lackawanna Avenue to get to West Side, so it's going to be beautiful over there in West Side and then to go through Lackawanna Avenue. And in thinking about in front of the Radisson Hotel, and I know that we had that discussion before, and there was some money that was supposed to be allotted to fix that wall that's breaking, falling down. Now, that's a true, a awful eyesore to the city of Scranton, and that too can be like a gateway to downtown if it could be fixed. So that's what I thought about along with the wonderful presentation that they made, and those sort of things came to my mind. That's it for me tonight. Just don't forget the food drive on Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Les Spindler.
Good evening, council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. Was disappointed to read the paper last week, that the developer that owned the 1716 Linden Street sold that property to the University of Scranton. We wanted to sell everything to the university. I don't know why that developer did that, but that would have been a good tax-paying property, and now it's just going back to you, we won't get any taxes from it. But, I mean, they're called the Royals up there, and I think we treat them like royalty, and that's wrong. Half the city is the University of Scranton now. I don't know why the developer sold that property. He was going to have 42 apartments and commercial space. That would have brought a lot of money into the city. So I don't know why they're selling everything to the university. I talked about this for years, we're losing so much money. I don't know how many properties we lost to them, but it's ridiculous. And while we're talking about the university, driving up in the Hill section around where the Jewish home is, I talked about this a long time ago, I used to work up in that area. Our parking enforcement people use selective enforcement in this city. I complained, driving that area, coming down Vine Street, you're taking your life in your own hands. They park right up to the corner, you have to creep out and hope you're not, you don't get hit by a car. And people have talked to me and said they, they park different places and they get tickets. They let these kids get away with murder parking illegally, but the tax-paying citizens get picked on or forced to pay fines. It's ridiculous. I got a ticket a few years ago parking the side of my house because I was facing the wrong way. Wasn't bothering anybody, wasn't a safety hazard, I was just ready to pull on my driveway, but I got sad, sidetrapped, came out and I got a ticket. Parking, and I told one of the parking enforcement people about that, and I never saw tickets. The one time it was a car in this exact same spot, right up to the corner, for three, four days in a row, never had a ticket on it. And I told the people who live in that area, they never see tickets on the cars. So these parking enforcement people got to do their job. Next thing, I was going by the old CVS on South Main Avenue in Scranton, and I saw an application for, to sell alcohol, so I guess, is that going to be a restaurant or a bar? Does anybody know?
I think, I've heard that it might become some sort of, like a takeout place, but I don't know if that is actually happening or not.
Yeah, I saw that, face up for alcohol, I figured it might be a bar or a restaurant.
It's not going to be a restaurant. It's going to appear to be a restaurant. My understanding is it's a company that had some problems out in Pittsburgh. It's a company that comes in and just sells beer, kind of like some of the others on Main Avenue, and what they're going to be doing is claiming it's a restaurant, maybe have a hoagie or two on a table, but unfortunately, because the license is transferred, transferred from within the city, it doesn't come before council.
Okay, I'll finish up. Does anybody know when the tax bills are going to be sent out?
So they should, I believe it's going to be next week. I could address that in fifth order too, to not take up your field.
This, I don't know, this really isn't city business, but I hope the postmaster's listening. I know we had the ice storm last Friday, but I was able to get around, I drove around the city, no mail. It was the second time this winter we didn't have mail. Whatever happened to the old post office saying of through wind and ice and sleet and rain? I guess, guess they don't want to get wet anymore or whatever, they don't go by them auto anymore. And lastly, I wasn't here since December, and I brought up about an abandoned car on Madison Avenue. It's gone finally. I saw it there last week, I went by today and it was gone, so finally got it off the street. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Would anyone else like to address council?
I would appreciate if you have the answers, if you'd hold them and do them in fifth order because I have quite a few I think you'll have the answers to. And Fay Francis called me before I left the house and asked if I would thank DPW for the wonderful job that they did in that nasty ice storm. We haven't had one like that in quite a while. And I, I know East Mountain was very well done, except I did feel sorry for Roaring Brook because I think it's going to go from freshwater to saltwater. There was so much needed. Now, back to the Home Rule Charter. I think that one of the reasons for going over this document, which is over 20 years old, is to be able to change things. Like A and D would not have happened if this, if you had a Home Rule Charter because it could have been specified better if that was a problem. Also, the, on the audit, you could, you could specify that all authorities use the same fiscal year as the city, and that would do away with a late audit all the time. And until that happens, you're, it's going to happen. And then how long do we wait for a contract with the police and firefighters until we go to arbitration? Is there some, if there, is there something that's specific, or do we just sit back and wait until we hear something else? Then P E L. They used to provide some items. One of my favorites was the cash flow chart. And I would like to know who is doing the cash flow chart now that P E L is not around, and what other items? Because somebody up there, I think maybe Kyle went to the meetings and he knows what they provided, and I would like to see a list of those and who's doing it now, or has it been given up? And on the, on the OECD and the Treasury, Treasurer's Office used to both be on the land bank. Has that changed? Did we lose a position on the land bank or? Anyway. And then do we have one or two city engineers? I recall last fall, or maybe closer to the end of the year, you all approved a Riley for, to be this city engineer. And, but I saw something in the paper where our former engineer was there. And I would like to know if, we now have two? I don't see two in the budget, though. And if this Riley has any affiliation with the one that would be making decisions on where work goes, if that's the same Riley? And when are we going to get an update on the Sorenti project? It's been very, very quiet. And same with the, with the stormwater issue on, on Kaiser Valley. That was one place that, that something was actually getting done. And I did see something in the paper, I believe it was yesterday, that the Kaiser, Kaiser Avenue Community Center is putting out a request for stormwater improvements. And I thought that was a city project, but I guess it doesn't matter as long as it gets done. But it would be nice if somebody could come and tell us. I don't know, who has the stormwater on the, I guess it's a DPW thing?
Yes, that's Mr. King.
Who, which of you up there?
Mr. King. Mr. King is the.
Oh, okay.
Is the DPW chair.
And then, when do we, do we expect to see the survey of what the city members want out of the rescue money as opposed to instead of putting, just prioritizing what the administration wants to do? Do we have a, a date for that? And then it's February, and is that not the month we get the new acoustics? I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Here I am. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Okay. I picked up a recycle card, and I never noticed it on mine, but, or if that's a new one, it said that the electronics are April 2nd. Okay. Hopefully, we can stay all day. And I have a little recommendation there. If you could, if you're going to require people to pay something on it, certain items, have a credit card scanner there that you can hand them a bill, and it would be helpful, you know? You're not sitting there writing a check or some stupid stuff like that. And once again, we need a very, very strict emphasis on cardboard, so try and take my recommendation seriously. Leave it behind if, if they're not going to recycle it. Once again, the tax exemptions came up, and we need either for the state to replace some of this money for tax exempts, which is totally disproportionate on this city, or we just need to make an ordinance. Please, no more. Don't come here. You know, find somewhere else to go. That's all there is to it. You know, it's going to be 40% by the time this is said and done, but a very short amount of time. We're at 36 now, and we have two whole city blocks here and there and everywhere, and it's not going to work. People can lose their home. My, my escrow is higher than my principal and interest right now. So, you know, someday it would really stink to have it just about paid off and be walking out of it. Some good news Saturday, if you want to call it that. We're going to be represented probably in South Side by Mario Scavella. Well, I hope that they know that as far as I'm concerned, or our household is concerned, it will be an honor to vote against them with their redistricting scams. It's totally ridiculous. It's totally out of hand. Hopefully, the courts will see it differently. And they also had a mid-court judge determine that drop boxes are unconstitutional in Pennsylvania. It's like, gee, thanks. The quality of life was up, and please just go easy on people. The lady next door to me years back walked away from her home over that quality of life. Now I have people in and out of there, some good, some bad, over three or four years. And it's being rented out for $1,300 a month with very little external improvements. $1,300 a month, that's two and a half times my mortgage. Now, I bought a fixer-upper, but, and put work into it myself, but. And we're now at 900,000 people. 900,000 people dead from COVID. People are calling it an endemic. Well, guess what? My health insurance went up on the government's side 16% this year. So how many little 16% before my social security raises just eaten right up? I should have asked this question a long time ago because it popped into my head a long time ago. What will COVID do for health insurance? So in other words, if you don't want to get vaccinated, or you think that there's a microprocessor chip that's going to have the KGB falling, you please stay the hell away from me. Don't come to my door. You know, don't bother me. Just go find somewhere else to go. We should actually have vaccination nights at restaurants, too. That'd be a good idea to raise some funds. Only vaccination cards allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Have a good night. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Voldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments? Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a couple of comments to, in regard to Marie Schumacher's question about the Kaiser Valley Community Center. They applied for their own grant, and they're starting to put some of that work out to bid after they got some of the, I think they needed some soil samples, things like that to comply with some of the state and city codes. So I'm happy to see that some of that work has gone out, or is starting to go out. I did get a citizen complaint about, which I'll give to Mr. Voldenberg, a home on the corner of Elizabeth Street and North Garfield Avenue. They have a fence down. It's been across the sidewalk for, for several weeks now, and I've gotten multiple complaints about it. Also, I had a citizen's request for a, a street light, which I emailed you earlier, on the corner of Bird Street in South Washington. So we'll go through the process of looking into that. Also, the last one is, can we, can we send correspondence and look into an update for the, the garage demolition that was done going back a week and a half or so? I don't know if there, there's any more work that needs to be done in the area, or if it's all completed, but if we could just get a response from the administration as to where we're at with that project.
I'll follow up.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have several. And just to respond, respond to Councilman Schuster, who just asked about the garage demo. I did receive some information today that there were blockages at, like, the top and the bottom of the stream, significant blockages. And so it is certainly going to be requiring some more work to, to resolve that, that issue. So at least we've got one step down in the process, but definitely I think we'll be receiving some more details on, on where that's at and what additional work needs to be done. I wanted to bring up something that I think over the past two weeks that a few citizens had, had mentioned with regards to the survey for the Economic Strategic Development Plan. There were a number of issues brought up, I think, with the development and rollout of that, that survey. And maybe some areas that people felt like were, were left off of that survey that were maybe important to them, that they would like to, to see included. So there, there won't be any additional surveys because that funding needs to be used by a certain period of time. We will be having For the Economy in Arc Caucus here on February 22nd. But what I would like to do is to get some additional input from residents. So if there was something on the survey that you felt like should have been there, or should have been asked, or additional concerns, then you can put that in writing. You can email that information to Mr. Voldenberg or myself, or both of us. His email's Fvoldenberg@scrappa.gov, and mine is J Rothschild@scrappa.gov. And I will make sure that, that input gets sent along to Fourth Economy and, prior to them coming in for that, so that that could be incorporated into, into their plan, so that everyone is heard. And a few other things that I had responses to. We did receive an email complaint today regarding Castle House, which I know we've, we've got a lot of complaints and there have been issues with over the years. I don't have the exact address of that, but I would like to find out what's going on with that property, if we can get an update. So, Mr. Voldenberg, if you could ask about that all forward along. The email to you, I believe there are pictures with the, just asking about the status of the house, if it's, if it's on the demo list, if it's condemned, what's happening there? And then Mrs. Hodouanis did bring up the importance of snow removal, and there was an article in the paper over the weekend, just notifying residents, reminding them of the ordinance that we have in place as a city, requiring them to, to remove snow or ice from their property, from the sidewalks within a 48-hour period, or they may risk being fined. But I just ask that, that people do that, just to look out for your fellow neighbors and for other people in the city. I know that, you know, my, my neighborhood is really poorly cleared and, as was downtown when I had gone there over the weekend and trying to push a stroller through, through the ice and slush, that was a little difficult to, to do. So not only that, but as a, as a PT, I can't tell you how many patients I see every winter and even throughout the year who have fallen or slipped on ice. It's like every day is, and someone tells me that that happened to them, and people of all ages, and you can get seriously injured in that, that way. And I'd hate to see that happening to, to people and, and to neighbors. So just please be respectful of, of others and, and make sure that you clear the way. If, you know, say you're an older person, or you're having trouble, you don't have the equipment to do it, find out if you can ask a neighbor to, to help you along. I know that's something I've always been willing to do, and I think that any other good, good neighbor would, would also do. So a couple other quick things here. But for the, the health coordinator, I do believe she, she provides plenty of input to, to the mayor. And with regards to COVID-19 pandemic, I know that we haven't specifically seen correspondences from her to council or to publicly. I think that the administration maybe makes those announcements coming from the administration, not specifically from her. But if it would be helpful, maybe we can get more of an update from her on how things are going with that, that position and, and the work that, that she's been doing. I think that might be helpful for, for council and the, the public, if my fellow council members are in agreement. And the Pan-African flag raising was, was this weekend, and I was unfortunately not able to go. I couldn't take the, the baby out in the, in the frigid cold on, on Saturday, unfortunately. But I'm glad that it, that it went well. It was a nice ceremony. And I believe that's, that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have two. Excuse me. So first of all, Mrs. Hodouanis brought up a good point about timely protocol for downtown. Mr. Voldenberg, with regards to moving cars, you know, before a storm, before an ice storm or before a snowstorm, could you reach out to the appropriate departments and provide us with the information or the protocol for moving cars before a snowstorm? I know there's something on the books, but I need clarity, and I'm sure Mrs. Hodouanis does, too.
There was.
Thank you. And secondly, it's National School Counselor Week. I'm going to read a little proclamation. I read it last year. I'm going to read it again. And this is, this is to go out to all the school counselors in our area, but especially two that I work with, Mrs. Ann Jordan and Mrs., Mrs. Nicole Gattano. I see firsthand the hard work that they do, and especially the past two years with the pandemic, dealing with a lot of, helping students through a lot of mental health issues. So whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to future the education, personal and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim February 7th to 11th, 2022, as National School Counseling Week. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, thanks, Ms. Jeffries, for reminding me about the wall at the Radisson. I have to follow up on that. I know that the Radisson and the county were working together to figure out where their, because they were awarded a grant, they were just figuring out on how to distribute that grant. So thank you for reminding me. I'll follow up on that one. Mr. Spindler did ask about the tax bills. Tax bills, from my understanding, should go out next week. There was a delay because the tax office relies on the assessors', data from the assessor's office, which switched over their operating system. So the tax collector's office had to run additional tests to make sure that the information they received was accurate. So that's the reason for the delay, and they should go out next week. In terms, so some of Ms. Schumacher's comments, just with the Home Rule Charter, I just want to remind you that there is a difference between the charter and the administrative code. You know, to amend the charter, that's a political process with a commission, you know, that comes up with recommendations. But the code is something that council and the administration could work together to amend, you know, on our own without that. So, and that's something that we are looking to do, because I know you've had questions about, in the past, about the refuse being put into a separate account and so on. So that is something that we're aware of, and we're working on trying to, you know, get different language to put in there that's actually accurate with how the city's operating at the moment. In terms of arbitration, I know there is a timeline. I don't have exactly what that timeline is in front of me, where certain things have to, they have to meet so many times before it could even go to arbitration. But I will get that information for you. I just don't have it in front of me. You did mention the cash flow chart from Pell. So we are waiting, we are waiting for an award from DCED for a grant to keep Pell on for an additional year to help us with that. There was some paperwork issues there, but I'm hoping that we're able to announce, you know, in the next week or two that we did receive that grant, and then Pell will still be able to assist us, you know, through this year in terms of the cash flow. I do believe, we do have two representatives on the land bank. The one on our agenda tonight is just because there's a new treasurer. So I believe it's Eileen Cipriani as OECD Director, and then the treasurer are the city's two representatives on the land bank. There only is one city engineer. I have to look back and see what, we might have approved Riley for something else in the fall, but it was formerly LaBelle and Associates, and we will now be moving to Riley and Associates if we pass, you know, the legislation that's on our agenda as the city engineer. We have been trying to schedule a Surenti Center update. We've had a lot of things we have, we've had to schedule, and we just haven't locked down a date yet. So I'm hopeful that that happens as soon as possible. And then you did bring up a survey for Rescue Act money. So we are going to have a caucus with the administration on how we're going to move forward in terms of the Rescue Plan money. I know the advisors, consultants that we brought on for the ARP money, they're putting together, like, they're finalizing their, they're finalizing the report on the final rules on how we could spend it and how it's in different boxes. And then for the acoustics, I'm hoping we get that RFP out in the next couple of weeks. And I believe that was all. If I missed anything, please let me know, and I'll try to answer that the best I could. I was also going to bring up the Castle House, because I also got that email thing. So Frank, I think that would best be Tom Alessi and then also the Housing Appeals Board, because I know the Housing Appeals Board has given them, given the owner of that property extensions in the past, because there were promises made in terms of that they were going to make the improvements that needed to be made so that they could pull the condemnation down, but they haven't met any of those deadlines. So that was one thing I was going to bring up, too. And I also was gonna, I also, lastly, I just have, I did, I received a couple complaints, you know, regarding DPW, snow removal with the ice this week. I just want to urge everybody to be patient with DPW. This was a difficult ice storm to manage. I know there was ice buildup on the plows. It was just one of those situations where it was, you know, a lot of precipitation came down and then quickly froze. But just to remind everybody that if you do have any issues where you need DPW to come out, call the dispatcher, and they'll get out as quickly as possible. It also is a little harder when it falls on a weekend where they have to call, you know, the DPW workers aren't necessarily required to come in, but, you know, so they have to call workers in. And then also, you know, they're limited in terms of the equipment they have to use in certain situations. So I just ask that they be patient. I know they do a great job. They try to do the best they can. But if you do have an issue, just call, please call the dispatcher, the DPW dispatcher, and they'll send somebody out as quickly as possible. And that's all I have for tonight. Mr. Voldenberg?
5B for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Thomas F. Carroll, 1610 Schlegel Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, to the position of Superintendent of Police to the City of Scranton effective January 25th, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Megan Raid, 1080 Mead Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Lackawanna County Land Bank. Ms. Raid will be replacing Mary Jo Sheridan. The term of Ms. Raid will commence January 28th, 2022, and fill the remainder of the term of Ms. Sheridan, which is scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2025.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to say, I do understand this process. I do understand we might have the time to get the info before final passage and before we get the appointment sent down to us. It was brought up in public comment tonight that this process is backwards, and I tend to agree with that. We have two resolutions on the agenda tonight for a position that has not yet been appointed, and it seems that this is happening time and time again. And I don't feel that it's council that's making this process harder than it needs to be. Last week, I voted no to an item in fifth order that's in seventh order tonight. I'm going to be voting no for 5C tonight. But I do understand that council may move this forward for introduction. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, on the question. So it's very concerning to me that there's two pieces of legislation in front of us tonight, one, 5C to move, and then final passage of an employee, the treasurer, that historically we appointed, or not, no, I'm sorry, not appointed, but we vote on the appointment. So we have two pieces of legislation in front of us before we even receive the actual appointment. So I'd love to move this one more time, but final passage, no way until we get clarity from the letter that our solicitor sent. I said this in caucus, that it appears to me that, you know, the recent communications we had from the solicitor, but it appears to me that, like I said in caucus, the mayor shut down City Hall twice, and that's her call, but it looks like she's trying to shut us down with regards to doing our job, voting on positions that we've historically done. So I'm not prepared to be shut down. So I'll move this, but final passage will be a different story if we don't get clarity.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number eight, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Riley Associates to provide consulting engineering services.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I'm going to make a motion to amend this legislation. It was mistakenly sent down as an ordinance. It should be a resolution. So I want to make a motion to amend this legislation to reflect that it should be a resolution and not an ordinance.
I'll second that.
On the question?
On the question, like I stated in caucus, so this legislation has been brought to us twice, right? Of course, it was a little screwed up because it was, you know, labeled an ordinance instead of...
We're on the question of the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll save it for the vote. I'll save it for the vote. Okay, sorry.
All those in favor of the motion to amend this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Anyone else on the question of the resolution?
On the question of the resolution, I'll go back to it. So this has been before us two weeks. There's been multiple questions posed to the administration. I had a simple one. Where is the required disclosure piece about donations to elected officials or anybody associated with the city? This is the fourth time I'm asking. So like I said, this is, final passage is next week. If I don't receive that, it'll be a no. And it's nothing personal to this engineering group, but it's policy, it's practices, it's things that we're used to doing, and all of a sudden, we don't, we're not getting information like we historically did. I can't make informed decisions without information that I ask for.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number seven, 2022, amending file of the council number 56, 2021, as amended, which amended the file of the council number eight, 1987, and the file of council number eighty-seven, 1976, entitled, Providing for the Levian Collection of a License for All Performers, Entertainers, Sporting Teams, Musical Groups, Bands, Theatrical Casts, Dancing Groups, Recital Groups, Paid Lecturers, and Speakers by Increasing Fees to Extend the Reduction of the Yearly License Fees for the 2022 calendar year.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, Resolution Number 10, 2022, amending Resolution Number 175, 2021, entitled, Amending Number 47, 2011, Authorizing, Empowering, and Directing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials to Appoint Liaisons Between the City of Scranton and Burkhyma, the Duly Appointed Collector of Earned Income Tax for the Lackawanna County Tax Collection District, for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes, to update City of Scranton representatives authorized to receive confidential tax information, to remove Mary Jo Sheridan and allow for the City of Scranton Treasurer, Megan Raid, to be authorized to receive confidential tax information.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
President Dunnehugh, as the Chairperson of the Committee on Finance, I'd like to make a motion to title, to table item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, for the various reasons we mentioned before and last week, we're asked to vote on a resolution outlining, or outlining, or giving approval for extra duties associated with a position we didn't even approve yet. So that's why I'll be voting in favor of tabling.
Anyone else?
Also, in regard to this item, for the last two years, we've been told that the salaries in the city need to increase to hire better quality employees. Again, council has asked for the resumes. It is in our purview, advice, and consent in regard to these individuals' qualifications to be able to review these resumes. So we were asked to increase these salaries. Council didn't go all the way with what was asked, but we did agree to smaller increases. And I think council, as well as the citizens here, need to see what types of people we're putting into these positions.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of tabling Item 7B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, and Item 7B is tabled.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 11, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Jerry Coyne Electrical Contract and Company, LLC, to perform electrical relocation work at Neyark Park.
What is the recommendation for the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.